It's seven o'clock, we're gonna go ahead with the roll call. Alderman Florian.
President.
Alderman Hayes.
President.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Mayor Taylor, no. I'm looking for a motion to seat Alderman Mozio as Presiding Officer in lieu of the Mayor's absence.
I'm able to motion.
I need a first and a second.
First.
Second.
That was Rivera first and Kirkwood second.
Everybody fight over it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alderman Mozio.
Thank you. We've already had roll call. We will move on to the invocation by Pastor Fred Maggie Williams Jr., New Life Ministries in Christ Church.
Let's bow our heads, eternal God, our loving and gracious Father, even the God and Father of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We pause in the solitude and magnitude of this moment to ask you to bless this council meeting. We pray for a spirit of cooperation. We pray for clear minds. We pray for pure hearts. We pray for courage, dear God, to make the wise decisions that you would have this council meet. And we thank you, dear God, that you love your people and that you love these men and women who sit in position to make decisions. We thank you, Father. Give them courage, give them boldness, give them wisdom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments, Alderman Hayes, I think you, the mayor asked you to read her mayor's comments, am I correct on that?
You are, I have them, if you're ready.
Yes, go ahead.
Alright. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Taylor is unable to join us this evening, and she requested that I read some brief remarks on her behalf. Welcome to our July 18 Waukegan City Council meeting. I'm so glad you've joined us here in Waukegan City Hall or online via Waukegan TV. In these meetings, we do the work of the people, our residents and our businesses, so we always encourage you to watch these meetings or come if you have public comments. Announcements. Waukegan High School environmental science teacher, Ms. Katie Kriski-Grobart, was selected as a national recipient of the Presidential Innovation Award for Environmental Educators from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. She is one of just 13 educators across the country recognized by the EPA for her commitment to environmental education and environmental stewardship, and will be formally recognized at a ceremony in Washington DC next month. On behalf of the city of Waukegan, we offer our congratulations. Congratulations also to Zoom Beer located at 3232 West Monroe Street in Waukegan for being named as one of the top 25 places to drink in the Chicago North Shore by Yelp. Zoom Beer took the number two spot. The Waukegan Chamber of Commerce is hosting its business after hours at the Waukegan Port District's office, offices outdoor patio on Thursday, July 21 from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The Chamber will also be hosting a Wake Up Waukegan breakfast event on Tuesday, August 2 at Bonnie Brook Golf Course, and the guest speaker is our own Waukegan Police Chief Keith Zupek. You can find more information at waukeganchamber.org. The Waukegan Public Schools will hold a resource fair on Saturday, July 30 from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Miguel Juarez Middle School. All Waukegan Public School District families are welcome to attend. Details can be found at wps60.org. Throughout the summer, there are events taking place every Saturday. There's yoga at the beach at 8:00 AM at Steiner Pavilion. This event is free for all levels. And Waukegan High School's award-winning JR OTC Drill Team Car Wash will be at Weiss Field every Saturday. All monies raised at the car washes go toward transportation expenses for their competitions. Lastly, the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency released a public notice. If you would like to learn more about the public notice or submit a public comment, go directly to tinyurl.com backslash WaukeganIEPA. On that note, I believe I now hand it back to the clerk or interim mayor Mozio to move on with resolutions and proclamations.
Thank you, Alderman Hayes. Two resolutions, proclamations, presentations, appointments. Motion to ratify appointment of Pauline Redd, is that correct? Redd to Waukegan Housing Authority Board. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Redd, would you like to step up and say a few words? You don't have to, but if you'd like to.
No, I have plans, just a few. Hi, everyone, I'm Pauline Redd. I've been in Waukegan for quite some time, and I'm very appreciative of the mayor for appointing me to this position, and thank you, everyone, very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Item B, motion to ratify appointment of Alonzo Jenkins to Waukegan Historic Preservation Commission. Motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Newsom. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Thank you. Alonzo, would you like to come up and say a few words, or it's up to you.
Good evening, the city council, residents of Waukegan. Just want to thank you, everybody, for this opportunity to be appointed to the Historic Commission. As the city sexting over the cemeteries, this position really helped me, gave me the resource I need for the history. We have a lot of cemeteries in Waukegan that's dated back to the 1800s. And just to have a wealth of knowledge of the Historic Preservation Committee, I appreciate this appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alonzo.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Number three, audience time. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Audience time, ooh, you moved too fast for Ms. Jane. We're coming up with it. I could probably do a few off the top of my head, but... You have three minutes in order to tell us what you would like us to hear. Ms. Kathy Charity, you're first on the list.
Let me know when you're ready.
And I'm ready for you.
Good evening, Mayor, well, she's not here, city council members and audience. First, I would like to express a few things. To me, Waukegan is becoming tremendously toxic. It has a lot of vehicles on the road speeding, driving recklessly with loud music, loud tuba music blasting every weekend as if everybody wants to hear that. I don't think so. Yet still, no American businesses on the rise. Pink ice cream stores on every corner, red, white and green stores taking over Waukegan and only Waukegan as if it's a third world country. I have mentioned many times about the store on Lincoln and 10th, Window Eyesore's. How are they allowed to get these businesses? The whole street is terrible, no longer user friendly to real constituents. Can't believe other areas were rezoned when nothing else has been done. Oh yeah, drugs and mental illness is on the rise. Many individuals are walking on the streets all hours and taxpayer, taxpaying homeowners don't feel safe coming out of their homes. Last Monday, I called the Waukegan Police three times because there was an individual having a mental health breakdown. I'm sure many of us know friends and members who suffer from this disease, and it's hard. This person was sitting on the streets in the middle of the alleys and eventually exposed themselves while urinating on a busy bus routed street. They also exposed themselves in front of another individual. I called Waukegan Police again and told them that the person had finally left. Why is this happening? Yes, so much in the first war. And why are planned parenthood clinics and shelters placed in low-income areas among people of color? Why? Move them somewhere else. This was all planned and designed by the government. Churches beside liquor stores, liquor stores beside banks, banks beside slots, slots beside, behind schools, liquor stores behind medical clinics, taking down poor people of color. This is why Waukegan is toxic. Progress or regress? We must wake up. Let's not, but last but not least, I feel that every alderman who represents his or her constituents needs to vote on everything. It's not fair to accuse yourself when it comes to certain issues. If not, they should not be an alderman. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Charity. I'd like to call the next four people, go right, go to the east side of the room. Rayon Edwards, Renee Pierce, Andrea Moore, Lakeisha Robinson. Mr. Rayon, go right ahead.
Good evening, councilman, Turner, Mayor. Mozio, you kinda look good in that seat. That was a joke. But I want to address a couple of things tonight. I had the opportunity to sit in one of the meetings that they had about the community-based organization. And I'm glad Alderman Newsom was there and also Alderman Florian. And so I want to say to the council, everybody up here, what are we doing? Is we letting Ann Taylor, the mayor, do what she wanna do? And our chief of staff do what they wanna do? I don't see any transparency. When you are doing a sponsorship that is going to the chief of staff's email, it should not be. So many people sat in that meeting, a few of them actually, and complained about their email not being received. And so now I'm starting to see how this thing go because we having some campaigning going on. You understand what I'm saying? I think all of you guys are aware of what's really happening. We elected one mayor, one, not two, not two. And it almost appears if we got two going on. I don't know who to call, who making decisions, who making the calls. And, and, and everybody can sit here and look puzzled. The next meeting, I could come here and I could print out my text messages and I can share them with all of you. Because I'm starting to be confused and I'm upset that we are not investing in the future of this city, and those are our kids. How? We could pay somebody to come and be a city administrator and a city manager $255,000 a year, but we can't invest more than $1,000 in the future of our kids? How? I need you aldermen to start speaking up. I need you guys to start putting y'all feet to the pedal and pressing all the way down. Enough is enough. Of all the years Waukegan has been up in here, we ain't never had no lock on the elevator. What am I paying taxes for? That's not okay. You wanna be like the courthouse? Put some metal detectors down there. But you don't get to pick and choose when we come in our building and come upstairs to visit a department. I don't care who recommended it. It's not right. We elect y'all to do a job, come in and do that job. Stop bullying us. Stop doing what you wanna do and what you think is right to do. So Alderman Bolton, Seager, Kirkwood, Mozio, and Newsom, y'all, let's get some work. Because y'all need to stay on this council. So whatever we got to do to make sure everybody get out the vote, we gonna turn them numbers up. Because this is our city. We make the rules here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayon. Renee Pierre?
Good evening to the city council, to the people of Waukegan and whoever else will be watching this later. So, in the sake of transparency, I have an audio clip that I would like you all to hear of Mr. Rayon Edwards and his onslaught toward me that happened on July 13 on the steps of the city council hall. I will warn, and it does have curse words in it.
You gotta be high.
If I am, bitch, you ain't that cool.
Oh, it don't matter, but you trying to be in front of the public, acting like that? High as a kite. He's high as a kite.
Bitch, you need to comb your hair.
You wanna represent the people? This ain't what we need. Keep calling me all my name.
I am.
They gonna see this, come see this shit.
I'm gonna give one.
Come see this shit.
You are trash, bitch.
This y'all king.
You are trash, bitch.
So with that said, the reason why I'm presenting this tonight, because this is a legal notice. This man is a social path. He's a repeat criminal. He just recently had a domestic battery case that he was prosecuted for in 2020. I heard he just received funds from the city of Waukegan. I believe we do have a city attorney that should be doing due diligence. And then he just threatened me. He threatened me in front of William Gerard Coleman of the North Chicago Think Tank who instigated the incident, all because he can't listen, for whatever reason. But that's not the most important part. The most important part is, this man is his attack dog. Okay? So, he inserts himself into a conversation that he had no privy of, no iota what it was about. I, being a person that tries to go in peacefully into a situation, I tried to split up two other people that were arguing, and this man got in my face. And then he threatened me. And if you didn't hear the slowed-down content of what he said, he said, "I'm going to get my cousin down here for you." He's been to jail for murder by proxy already. He's been to jail for murder by proxy already. And you wanna know something else? He did this in front of your presence, Mr. Stewart. You were there. Are you his lackey now?
Yes.
I'm just asking. Because here's the thing. I heard that you came to the city council meeting the next day for the nonprofits, and you tried to throw shame on my name. You tried to besmirch me, you and Billy Coleman. I told you it wouldn't work. Did you forget I was recording? Do I need to release the video? And yes, I will let you all know, I did curse back at him because he attacked me, because he got into my face, because he threatened me. I was angry. I was in defense of myself. This man is unworthy to be around chipmunks, let alone children. The public has been warned.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre. Thank you, Ms. Pierre. Andrea Moore.
Hello. For the sake of having a reasonable accommodation according to ADA regulation, I will be speaking an extra minute, which would be a total of four. Hello, council and town folk. My name is Andrea Moore. I am a longtime resident of Waukegan. I am also a single mother of two boys, eight and three. I also am disabled. I'm a student. I've been doing it for a very long time. I'm like two classes away from finishing my associate's in business. My focus will be entrepreneurship because it would give me the ability to parent full-time just about as well as earn a living. Most recently, I was evicted from the Barwell Manor Homes or the South Sheridan Bluffs, which is located on Genesee or South Sheridan. Owned and managed by Waukegan Housing Authority and now Berry Development Corporation. To my account, I was evicted due to my efforts in advocating and trying to organize residents. I have spoke with persons across the board when it comes to official, who are officials and or have authority. Alderman Bolton, Alderman Newsom can vouch for that, even Chief Bridges. I have diligently and relentlessly given formal complaints to the HUD, IDA, the executive, excuse me, Executive Inspector General's Office. Even before Sam Cunningham was relieved of his self as a mayor, I had even complained to him. I have also done so to the Perry State Legal Services. When I was in court, I tried to advocate for myself, and that was a very biased environment. I am starting to question the legitimacy and operations and/or planning, constantly advertising undeniable issues and stating what steps we're going to implement in order to eradicate things that we feel like should be changed and have this idea of progression actually followed through. I myself, in my efforts to do what I can or step into my place as a citizen and actively be present, I have been retaliated against, I have been intimidated. And most of the time, most of the time, excuse me, simply ignored. I am going to urge people to not do those things, especially when we have the circumstances of the pandemic that have been active throughout my entire journey into advocacy and community outreach. As I said before, I have two kids, so I guess that's why I'm still doing this. But I know other people who find difficulty and having a voice in the community will turn to undesirable actions and/or plans when they can't do things the correct way. I encourage city officials to contact the Barwell community, especially because I know that, for instance, Home Grant, you're like a partner, City of Waukegan is like a partner, Home Grant funding, like $700,000 was invested into the operations. And although I brought, again, I had a Zoom meet with Mayor Taylor and George Bridges, and she shooed me off afterwards and never got a proper investigation. She said everything I said was just allegations, and she favored the persons, the board of the Waukegan Housing Authority over me. I've stated clear facts. I don't mind providing any type of record that would help.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Lakeisha Robinson?
Hello. I'm the new tenant, one of the new tenants at the new Barwell, and I wanted to read something that I wrote in double ACP. I'm raising three boys who are 12, 10, and 5. My oldest boys attend cooking classes at the community center. Sometimes they don't wanna attend, they hesitate to come from cooking classes due to the gun violence and large crowds hanging out nearby. We are living in fear. My five-year-old wants to go out to the park in the community, but doesn't fully understand why I keep them in the house. At 4:00 AM in the morning, when I saw that gun being put out by my window, I called the police and woke my boys up to sleep on the floor. I can't sleep at night. I feel like I have to be on high alert to be prepared. I have never been so scared to be home or leave my, leave out my door, and my kids see the fear in me and not see it in them. Those are new units with bullet holes already in them. Made a second, there was a shooting. Those bullets went right above my unit. Had that gun would've never jerked back, my five-year-old would've got shot laying in the bed. I have, I have nowhere to turn to as far as who can help me to get up out of this community. I feel like Waukegan Housing is sweeping some of this mess under the rug, and the public don't even know about it. Those are brand-new units with bullet holes. You have families living in fear. Some of us did not wanna come back, but we were forced to come back.
Thank you, ma'am. The next five will be Charles Pitts, Brother Blanks, Margaret Carrasco, Clyde McLemore, and Brendan Stewart. Charles Pitts, Brother Blanks, Margaret Carrasco, Clyde McLemore, and Brendan Stewart.
The nonprofit meeting that the mayor hosts is a semi-closed session meeting. It's only open to certain members of the public. And the problem is, is people think it's something that it's not. It's a semi-closed session meeting. Willie Coleman, which, from North Chicago Think Tank, wants to go on Facebook and post that it's open to the community. So they, they, they haven't been around enough to know what that meeting's about. I guess I'm just very concerned about several things. I'm just very alarmed about the, the situation that happened in front of city hall. I have a written statement. I would like to enter that into the minutes of the board. I would like to do that. I'm under the impression that I can enter documents into the minutes of the agenda. That's for the board and the mayor and our chief of staff. The problem becomes, when you have like a career criminal with no sense of redeeming themselves, to go throughout the community and on social media, dogging, berating people, calling people trash, whores, implying that they're going to get someone to kill them, and then, and in part, the city of Waukegan is giving them checks. And now, is this the type of behavior that should be modeled by children? Modeled to children? You know, it's like, you know, he has over 29 charges, and it seems like he has no desire to act with integrity. You look at his Facebook page, he contradicts himself. He wants to talk about the Ralph Peterson, Clyde McLemore smack, but he comes out and threatens a woman. It's like, you know, he doesn't even believe what he says. I want to thank George Bridges. We, in the, in the meeting, we spoke about the many McKinney funds. I'm changing subject. Waukegan is losing literally millions of dollars because people don't know about the McKinney funds. I believe George Bridges is on it. He'll be looking into it. You know, people want to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Thank you.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. One time I was here, I just want to reiterate, when it comes to the fresh vegetables market, I won't even call it farmer's market. I think it's important for the city of Waukegan to have a fresh vegetables market, even if it's not the ones who put the proposals in. So that is something every city should be able to take part in, to have a fresh vegetables market. If you don't agree with the people that came here, create your own, but make sure we get one here. Police Department, you know, I got a call five minutes before I walked through the door, and the citizen was on the phone with me while she was pulled over. And reason she stayed on the phone with me, because the fact that she didn't understand why she was being pulled over. After the fact, the police let her know at that time that for some reason or another that she wasn't aware of, that the license plates were suspended. Well, she wasn't aware, but that's after the fact. But what I have a concern with, when in this day and time, contact with the police can mean somebody ending up dead or a situation that just turned out real bad for the police, because police are now, they end up getting shot too. I would say the less contact police have with our citizens, the better everybody is off, to include the police. I would like to know, like an answer from why this police, police officer by the name of Lau, why did he pull this particular young lady over? I asked her, I'm on the phone, I could hardly hear, why did he tell you he pulled you over? She said that he said that because there have been cars that are being stolen. That don't sound like a legitimate reason, nowhere within the law, to be pulling anybody over. There was no probable cause there. It could've turned out in a very bad way. So as we have our new chief in place now, these are the kind of, these are the kind of practices and things and the problems that we was having before, why people were skeptical about having this man up here. Now, I can't give it to him, but accountability started tops down. And the problems that we was having, these are some of the problems that kept me in this city council meeting from 2003 till this day. It was the police department that brought me here. It is the police department that keep me here. When I get calls like this, and somebody wanna stay on the phone while I'm listening to this, and you give no real accountability why that person was pulled over, that's not good. So he let her off with a warning. That's all fine and good, but you shouldn't have never pulled over if you never had a probable cause. You guys, this is the kind of thing that can lead to some real problems with your police department. You need to get it in check right away.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Margaret Carrasco?
This afternoon, a car ran, run, ran over someone, struck him. The police cited him. The police sighted him, arrested him, correctly so. On July 16th this year, Wisconsin police officer did the same thing, and he was arrested. The police chief said that he's being held in the, in the, in the jail and with charges, and that he's been placed on administrative leave while doing the investigation, and he asked outside agency, the Wisconsin State Patrol, to do the investigation, not he himself. But in Waukegan, that's not the case. I've lost track of how many black and brown people have been killed, injured, ran over by Waukegan cops and Waukegan firemen. And each and every time, they're not sighted, not demoted, and not arrested. This needs to stop. So tonight, so recently, according to the eyewitnesses, and there's a heck of a lot of them, there was a fire marshal, Waukegan, ran over two human beings. They happened to be two Mexicans. They happened to be two city Waukegan employees. And you see his picture? That was here at the city council. He's smiling, he's laughing. Why? Because his brother is the police chief. So he thinks he got off and nothing's going to happen. Well, dude, you got something else coming, because the feds are going to look into, because we've had too many incidents, there's a pattern here. I want you to hear tonight the recording of an eyewitness and her version of what really went down, and you're going to be appalled. I will be posting this Facebook so the whole world can hear, so he can keep laughing about it.
And they were getting his information even though he didn't witness the incident when it happened. Then afterwards, the fire marshal starts speaking to the victims and starts addressing them about whether they want to walk or take an ambulance, in which I intervened and said how come he was speaking to them and they weren't separated, given that he was the one that had ran his vehicle over them, felt that they needed some type of boundary or space in order for them to feel comfortable to voice what had happened to them? Given his position and title, and he was in uniform at that, and after he had deliberately spoken to them as if they were to blame for his car being over her body. After I started asking them this, he start, one of the officers starts directing me and telling me to step away, to step away, if I didn't want no problems, that I needed to step away. Another officer jumps in and said that I didn't see anything, that whatever I seen, whatever I think I witnessed, whatever I think happened, that they don't need my permission for me to leave, and that I don't need to say anything, that they have my name, and they have my address.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you. Thank you. That'll be, that's your three minutes.
You're going to hear the complete one on my Facebook page.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Margaret. Clyde McLemore.
When is this mayor going to get it? I noticed the disregard this mayor has, not only for the citizen, but for the alderman requests, too. Now, what is it that he's talking about? I'm glad you asked. Last council meeting, I heard a couple of aldermen mention that they thought the fees for the block party was too high. Mayor, I know you're watching. Block parties bring citizens together, and this builds communities. Neighborhoods knowing that who, who's the next-door person who's living on that block. This makes the block safer, and when something happens, the block people are willing to watch out for the block. This makes the block safer, and property values goes up, and it becomes safer. But where the mayor lives, when somebody move in, somebody knock on the door with cookies. Well, in today in time, it's not happening in our community. A shooting could happen right in front of somebody, and they ain't going to say nothing, because there's no trust in the community. The city administration is about a dollar. The mayor has locked the city hall down so nobody can come in unless they want to. Until your shenanigans and policies change for the citizens, I will be a thorn in this mayor's side. Again, I am still waiting on the settlement agreement, which was settled several months ago on TINA, that we still haven't gotten yet, Stu. It's time for you to start working as a mayor for the city and not some sadist white woman who really don't give a damn about the city. I had to outsmart the city in order to do our second city's Black Business Expo. I had to do it on private property just so none of my vendors would have to pay any city fees.
Thank you. Brendan Stewart?
Good afternoon, good evening, City Council. I'd like to first apologize that this interpersonal conflict that we've been embroiled in has regrettably become the business of the city. However, I am now put in a situation where I must address defamatory statements and fictitious allegations that were made against me due to my proximity to a disagreement between Mr. Edwards and Ms. Pierre. Before I continue, for those of you who don't know me, I've been a Waukegan resident for seven years. I've started and sold businesses in this city. I'm an active search and rescue pilot for the Air Force Auxiliary. And I associate with Ms. Pierre and Mr. Edwards through the development of their nonprofit organizations. And I offered to assist them in developing these organizations, which are focused on economic development right here in this city. What Ms. Pierre conveniently left out of that recording were numerous homophobic statements that were made against Mr. Edwards, inclusive of Ms. Pierre implying a threat involving a concealed firearm. I was there, I witnessed it. I was not a party to this disagreement, I happened to be there. Regrettably, now, this has become the business of the city. I didn't want it to be. Apparently, a disagreement between two individuals regarding payment for services at a, at the North Chicago Farmer's Market was central to this disagreement, but the recording that was played here is not indicative of what occurred. That was a 20-minute fight on the steps of this building. And I'm sorry that that's now become public business. I'm sorry that Mr. Edwards was defamed, and I'm sorry that I have to make this statement. Sometimes no good deed goes unpunished. I appreciate your time, and I hope that these types of personal disagreements do not continue in this chamber. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alderman Mosio, that concludes the audience time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will move on to the consent agenda.
Make the motion.
Alderman, will you please look it over? Before we do that, Alderman Turner, does anybody want to take anything out?
I'd like to take out item B, please.
Item B, okay, Alderman Florian, anybody else? All right, we'll take a consent agenda, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Newsom. We'll be removing item B. Roll call on the consent agenda.
You'll need to read it.
We don't, we don't have, we have to get a motion on this, Stu? On the consent, no?
We did.
Do we get a?
We got a motion.
We have a, a motion by Alderman Turner, and second by Newsom.
Yeah, so.
Now we have to read it.
Yes, can you?
You going to read it?
Oh, I'll read it, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
Except for number four.
All right. Item A, motion to approve the regular minute meetings from Tuesday, July 5th, July 5th, C, motion to approve the regular payroll dated July 15th, 2022, in the total amount of $1,719,524.99. Motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, final payouts dated July 1st, 2022, in the amount of $101,962.74. Motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PD holiday buyback, comp time, elected official in civil service stipend dated July 15th, 2022, in total amount of $21,597.67. Motion to approve the community development block grant, CDBG, 2022 Annual Action Plan and 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPER. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee at regular meeting on the 5th of July 2022. G, motion to approve an ordinance for zoning calendar, 2661, a map amendment from R1 Single Family Resident to B3 General Commercial at 1465 North Green Bay Road. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee at their regular meeting on the 5th. Motion to approve an ordinance for zoning calendar, 2662, a map amendment for CR Conservation Recreation to B3 General Commercial at 1535 North Green Bay Road. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee at their regular meeting on the 5th. Motion to approve an ordinance for zoning calendar, 2663, a map amendment for R1 Single Family Resident to B3 General Commercial at 12888 West Sherman Avenue. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee at their meeting on the 5th. Motion J, motion to approve an ordinance for zoning calendar, 2664, a conditional use permit for a garage for storage, repair, and servicing of motor vehicles at 1307 West Belvedere Road. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee at their regular meeting on the 5th. And K, motion to approve an ordinance for zoning calendar, 2666, a conditional use permit for a daycare center at 1733 West Washington Street. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee at their regular meeting on the 5th. There we go. Roll call, please, Clerk.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Alderman Florian. Item B, your questions, please.
Yeah, so the vendor payments include approximately $74,000 in payment to Avenue. And I know, I probably need to address this to Stewart, although I can hardly see you down there. I know we can't discuss the specific establishments that were audited and the results of those audits, but since we're having to pay such a large amount for this audit, is there a way we can talk about the next step, or what, what we're going to do about? Because we all, I'm sure, saw the amounts of, of what's owed from the businesses that were audited.
Yes. I think that the, the next step is going to be that we're going to meet internally with the Finance Department and talk about ensuring enforcement going forward, and options that we have, and present, you know, basically what the city strategy will be to ensure that food and beverage taxes and hotel motel taxes are paid on time and full at all times.
So one of the things, I think, I saw, all of those establishments have gaming machines, correct?
I, I'm not aware of that's the case.
I'm pretty sure they do. So we're, we're not able to, like, withhold, you know, their ability to use their gaming machines or, or whatever in lieu of them giving us the money they owe us?
We would have to go through a tax deficiency process with them, which we have established and we could do. And we can present that to the alderman as to, at your next briefing, as to what that process would be.
Because I know there was a lot of controversy up here about this whole process to begin with, and it's just frustrating to me that some businesses follow the rules and pay when they're supposed to, and some of these don't. And I'll emphasize again, this is tax they collect on our behalf. This is not their money. It's our money. When their customer comes up and they pay, they collect this tax for us, it's supposed to come to us. It's not money coming out of their pocket, it's not a burden on them, they're collecting it for us, to give to us. It's a clear cut, they collect it, they should pay it to us. And there's one business in there that owes us quite a large amount of money. So anyway, I just wanted to talk about that in, in public, because that's, you know, now, and then, and then we didn't think we were going to have to pay this audit for them, right? To begin with? I mean, wasn't, wasn't it going to be a percentage of what they collected or something, we were told?
Yes, the, I think the initial idea was that there was going to be significant revenues that would be collected based on this. And I think one of the reasons that this drew out was because of COVID, and also there were a number of businesses that went out of business, and then there was also the transfer in administrations. So, yes, that was the original plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, item B, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner. Uh, roll call, uh, yeah, money. Roll call.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Clerk. Uh, we have new business. I will entertain a motion for omnibus.
I'll motion.
I'll make the second.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Turner.
Alderman Mosio, I think we're holding over, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know the number, the block party.
You are correct. Um, I think it was D, uh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hold on, I'll get to, um.
I think it's M.
Which one was it, M? Alderman Hayes? Okay, so M is being hold, oh, yeah, yes, correct. Thank you for that, Alderman Hayes.
Sure.
Item M is being held over to our next meeting.
And is an F also?
F has been pulled. Okay? You want A set out? Oh, Newsom, like, A taken out, all right.
So which ones, we got A?
All right, I got it, I got it. All right. B, motion to adopt the resolution providing a one-year extension and spending authority for an estimated amount of $180,000 with air comfort for HVAC, preventative maintenance, and emergencies. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee at their regular meeting on the 18th. Motion to adopt the resolution approving a professional service agreement of Paramount Casino Civil Engineering Review with Seorba Group, Inc., in the amount of $37,475.85. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee at their regular meeting on the 18th. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to purchase one command vehicle from John Jones Automotive Group in the amount of $45,000 pursuant to the sole source exception, section This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee at their meeting on the 18th. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to extend a management service agreement and a support and maintenance agreement with N. Harris Computer Corporation for a three-year term commencing July 1, 2022, for the city's Enterprise Resource Planning System, ERP. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on the 5th, 18th, excuse me. Motion to authorize the proper city officials, no, that's getting pulled out, never mind. J. Uh, G, motion to authorize the proper city officials to purchase software commodities and services from SHI International Corporate in amount of $90,000 pursuant to the joint purchasing exception, section 2-458i3. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on the 18th. Motion to waive the competitive bidding and authorize the proper city officials to procure security equipment as well installation and maintenance services from Pentegra System LLC in not to exceed amount of $150,000. This matter was presented to Finance and Purchasing on the 18th. Motion are the proper city officials to waive competitive bidding and authorize the city proper city officials to enter into renewal or printing services and equipment agreement with Impact Networking in a not to exceed annual amount of $35,000. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on the 18th. J, excuse me, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve a change order with alliance in the amount of $7,891.91, increasing the contract from $1,964, 60, oh, is that right? Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta close this. $1,964.30 to 1-971-929.91. The matter was presented before Finance and Purchasing on the 18th. Motion to adopt an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 14 regarding the regulation of automatic amusement machines and vending machines. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on the 18th. And motion to adopt the resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding the development and plan, an agreement to consolidate participating Lake County public safety answering points. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on the 18th, and M is being held over. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Now we'll go to item A, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Hayes.
And let the record reflect that Alderman Kirkwood is recusing himself, as he does with all liquor license matters.
Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, read it out.
Yeah, that would help. Motion to approve an ordinance creating a Class K1 banquet liquor license for Chelsa LLC DBA. LLC DBA Milan Banquet Hall, 651 Lakers Road. This matter was heard by the Community Development Committee at their regular meeting on the 5th. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
That is all the business we have today.
No.
No, M is held over.
F.
F, F.
F was pulled out, right?
Yeah, F was pulled, F was, F was pulled at the request of staff.
Correct.
Okay, right, okay.
That concludes our meeting. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Not yet.
Alderman economics.
What about next?
Alderman.
Oh, Alderman's time, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Alderman's time.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'd like to commend all of the city staff and volunteers and all the amazing people that made SCOOP such a great event. I know especially Jane and David put in tons of hours and thank you for that, to you guys. I know David's not here tonight, but it was really fun. I didn't make it down on Friday, but I did go down on Saturday, and it was very well attended and, I think, for the most part, uneventful. I commend the police chief for having tons of security down there. I've never seen so many police officers in downtown Waukegan and in so many places before, so thank you for that, for keeping our citizens safe and allowing everyone to get together and have a great time. So, I think, excuse me, I think it was a huge success and I just want to let everybody, you know, thank everyone who was involved in making that happen, so. I wanted to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Alderman Hayes said the last meeting after the Highland Park incident. There was an excellent article in the Washington Post recently written by a man who is a professor of law at Stanford University about guns. You know, we all talk about, and Alderman Hayes eloquently talked about guns in the community and in society and so on, and this man has actually studied what happens when there's, there's more guns in the community. So, recently, the Supreme Court struck down a New York law that said only people who could demonstrate a compelling need to carry a gun could do so. So, that, that law has been stricken, anybody now in the state of New York can, can get a, get a gun. So, we enforced, unfortunately, know what the effects of ruling, according to Mr. Donahue, is in that relatively states that still restrict the carrying of weapons, it, it does cause a spike in violent crime and will lead to more guns being stolen and result in police solving fewer violent crime cases. They know this is true because research has established that's what happens in other states that have liberalized their gun carrying laws. And no doubt, as, as gun rights advocates never tire of arguing, people carrying guns are able to thwart some small number of crimes. He quotes it later in this article, is .09 of the time, a gun is used by a good guy to stop a guy with, a bad guy with a gun. The data shows that the positive effects are swamped by a more general rise in violent crime and related negative outcomes. In some states, they were surprised what they didn't find. As more states embrace the right to carry, the rate at which Americans use a gun in response to a criminal, the threat didn't budge. People confronted by criminals use guns, 0.9, I'm sorry, I think I said .09, 0.9% of the time. So, less than 1% of the time is, is the good person with the gun the one that, that ends up thwarting the, the crime. They also looked at how the right to carry laws affect overall crime. And overall crime always rose. Firearms-related crime rose even more significantly. Road rage incidents, for example, are more likely to end badly when more people have guns. So, widespread carrying of guns further incentivizes criminals to make sure they have guns because more, more people are going to have guns, so they better make sure they have them, right? It says the, the latter fact, the fact that the widespread carrying of guns further incentivizes criminals to make sure they're packing, that fact likely explains why firearm robbery showed the single highest rate of growth of any crime. A highly statistically significant increase of a third, a third. And then, I just, one more point, I won't read this whole article, but one more point. The right to carry laws also lead, led to a dramatic 35% increase in gun thefts. People, police reports from around the country have attributed both of, bulk of these thefts to guns left in unlocked cars. How many times do we get police reports up here of people whose cars get stolen because they leave their car running with their keys in it? Well, now, they're going to be leaving their gun in there too, apparently. So, I guess I just wanted to emphasize a little more of what Alderman Hayes said after the horrible incident in Highland Park. I personally believe that guns are too easy to get. I think this, this data shows that it's going to lead to more crime, the more guns there are in our country, and I think we should do everything we can to prevent that from happening in our community. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a couple of brief comments. I just want to thank Department of Buildings and Public Works, Commissioner Garland, and Salas, you guys have done a terrific job. I've been sending kind of a barrage of emails recently, and Chief of Staff Bridges, you've been very helpful as well. Just with the water main break off, I was playing the other day and just, you know, a lot of people in the Ninth Ward, but throughout the city, just having requests about building permits and issues that they see in their neighborhood. Everything from seemingly as insignificant as painting fire hydrants, it's very important, especially if you have a fire hydrant in your front yard. But to stop, excuse me, streetlights and speed bumps and stop signs and slow down for children signs and things of that nature, those, those, those are the easy things for us to deal with. It is, I, I welcome those emails. Admittedly, I pass them off to the individuals that know how to get it done, and I, I just want to take a minute to thank you guys for, for responding so quickly and taking the time to, to take those requests very seriously. So, thank you for that. I have personally heard from some of my neighbors, but other people throughout the Ninth Ward, that, that have just been very complimentary over, over the city. There's always the, you know, the complaints about how long it takes to get something done, but at the end of the day, people are going through the process and the process is there for a reason. So, I just, I just want to thank everybody for that. And then, I just want to compliment Lisa May, the, the beach looks terrific and by all accounts, things are going smoothly, and it's just a dramatic improvement down at the beach. So, so thank you very much for that. Lastly, Alderman slash interim mayor Mozio, you did a heck of a job, so thank you, sir.
Pretty easy to read.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to thank all my constituents for reaching out to me and calling me and just letting me be involved in your events. So, with that being said, I appreciate, I know we have pulled from the agenda the charge for having block parties, but I, speaking and being a voice for my constituents, I believe that we should not be charging extra money for, to have a block party. So, I just want to let you all know that I am supporting you and because it encourages get-togethers, it encourages connection, and it is, we are, our constituents are already giving in to our system and being charged taxes and things like that. So, I just want to be a voice for my constituents on that subject. And with that being said, needless to say, the First Ward has quite a few events coming up. We have Trinity AME Church giving their scholarship program, which will be on July 30th at 2:00 a.m. at 210 South Avenue. We have the Jesus Name Church giving a block party on the 30th from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then, we have our NORCO, which, this is a program that supports those in recovery, giving their first gala July 22nd. I understand the tickets are sold out. And then, we have on July 24th Beacon Place giving their Walk in the Neighborhood, once again, coming together. And then, lastly, if you have any concerns, feel free to call me, as most of you do, at 224-607-8445. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Thank you. Uh, I, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much, Jane, I'm talking about Mrs. Ferry, and David Monley. These two worked fantastically for the SCOOP, the little, we had so many good-looking cars, so many good people down there. I want to thank the Police Department, the Fire Department, paramedics, Public Works, everybody that took the time to work so hard to have a good event, especially after what took place south of here. It turned out well, and I thank everyone for all their hard work. The guy, the people that own these cars, I hope next year, we do have SCOOP again. Bring them on back. I enjoyed it. I was there Saturday for about three hours looking at all the, all the cars. Lot of money down there, and it takes time to rebuild a car and go through it, I know. Well, thank you, everybody, and thanks for coming to the council meeting. I look forward to seeing you in the future. Have a safe, fine night. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Alderman Mozio.
Yeah, thank you. Just briefly touch on SCOOP a little bit. Um, Alderman, we just got a report from Chief of Staff Bridges that outlines some things, but that heavy police presence was in the works before the tragedy happened in Highland Park. And I think people saw a lot of out-of-town officers. That's because it was a NIPUS, that's a NIPUS conglomeration of out-of, out-of-Waukegan officers, which we pay into every year to the tune of about $10,000. But we got a lot of security for a very low price as far as that goes. And sadly to say, going forward in this country, Alderman Florian's touched on it, that's going to be the norm. You're going to have a heavy, heavy, heavy police presence anytime there's a gathering. It just is. Because the number-one job of the government, whether it's the federal or the local, is public safety. It is. It's the largest budget item everywhere, it just is. So, going forward, it's just, that's what's just going to have to be. Because nobody wants what happened in Highland Park at a Fourth of July parade to happen in their community. And one of the only ways to mitigate that is a heavy police presence. It just is. Obviously, there's root causes and we know all that, but you still have to take care of the here and the now, and that's with a heavy police presence. And if you don't agree, go out and tell people of Highland Park.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'd like to echo what some of the other Alder persons have already said regarding SCOOP. I think it was an outstanding event. Certainly, all the presence of the law enforcement, fire, Public Works, you know, did an outstanding job, and hopefully, we can continue to have that event. Also, in regards to block parties, I believe that block parties are used to familiarize yourself with your neighbors and also to build a better community. And certainly, we shouldn't be charged for something of that nature. So, as we did table it, we'll bring it back and, and vote on that particular issue regarding block parties. I think $100 should not be charged to our constituents and certainly those individuals that have paid, and I don't think that unless they have already had the block party, they have not been charged just yet. So, that will come back. Also, in October, October the 8th, tentatively, we're going to have another shred day, and we're going to do something a little different. We'll also have the electronics. We're looking at face-based organizations that will take clothing and give it to the needy, as well as getting rid of old medication. Also, we're asking the library to collect books from our constituents that are good books that we can give back to the community free of charge, and that will take place at the Sheriff's Parking Lot. It's in the works now, which will start at 8:30 to 11:30. So, tentatively mark your calendars for that particular date. Also, it's important to remember that we heard a lot of things tonight about how we treat one another. We need to continue to be kind to one another, even though we may disagree. Sometimes individuals don't understand why things go on the way they do, but certainly, we need to learn how to disagree without attacking one another. Once again, I thank everyone for coming out tonight. Continue to pray for the city, pray for those individuals that are having difficult times mentally and physically, as well as those communities have experienced violence. And certainly, it can happen anywhere in the country. No one's exempt, so we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Lots have been said about SCOOP, and I'll just jump on board as well. Excellent event. I was down both days, and after speaking with our Chief of Police, I made a statement that I thought that that was about the safest place you could be at that time. Was in Waukegan, and he said, "Well, I think this is about the safest place you can be between Chicago and Milwaukee." And I would, I would echo that. The police were out in force, and I think everyone that was out there that attended the SCOOP felt safe. So, I'll thank you, Chief, for securing those officers and, so, Public Works Director, I received a text message yesterday morning about 5:30 that there was a water main break from one of my constituents, 2600 Block of West Grove, and I just wanted to thank you and your staff for making sure that, that was taken care of speedily. The residents over there on Grove were very thankful. So, I appreciate all your hard work and your dedication to making sure things are taken care of in a timely manner and speedily when they really need to. Some of the constituents were concerned about maybe flooding in their basements and things like that, so I just wanted to say thank you for taking care of that. That's all I have.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, so in the Sixth Ward, excuse me, I'd just like to recognize and, and thank the businesses that put together our, what we call a business block party, and that was held on Saturday up on Greenwood. That would be Nature's Emporium and, excuse me, Maritza's Chair Hair Salon, and there's an associated real estate agency, and I apologize, I can't remember the name of them, but they are affiliated with Nature's Emporium. It's a great event. In hindsight, and this is one of the things that, that comes before, it's a learning point for all of us, this probably should have been held as a, a special event as opposed to a block party. But nonetheless, it was a great event, great turnout, lot of fun and, and just good clean fun in the gathering. On Thursday, I held my Sixth Ward, my Q3 Sixth Ward meeting. Want to thank everyone who, who came out for that. The recap on that meeting will be in your email boxes. I've already posted it on Facebook, but check your email. Annual Ice Cream Social and Sixth Ward is coming up on August 27th, and details will follow in, again, in the email and on social media, so keep your eyes open for that. Down on the lakefront, excuse me, a month or more ago, we put the speed bumps in, and one of the things, this is why I have a board meeting, so I can hear from my constituents and not just talk, because I, I talk a lot. But one of my constituents offered a suggestion, Director Garland. The speed bumps that we put down there are, they, if, because they're, people are going around the speed bumps into the grass as they head south in the, down the lane, they're going around them, and the suggestion was that we move those speed bumps so that they are adjacent to the phone poles, so that they can't go around because of the phone poles. Does that make sense? Okay, great. sense? Okay, great. So, I went down there yesterday, took a look at it, absolutely spot on. My observation then, too, would be that we move the speed bump that's closer to the parking lot, move them over a little bit, because there's a space between the speed bumps. Motorcycles in particular can get through there, but also, some of the smaller cars can get through that space between the speed bumps. Does that make sense? Got it. Okay, thank you, sir. And then, I want to, one of, one of the things that I do in my board meetings is I, I detail the departmental statistics for the Sixth Ward over the last quarter, and then in January, I do a meeting, I recap the entire year. But, and I'm not going to go through, through all of that, that's, that's not the purpose of this, but I just want to highlight what the, the accomplishments of, one of the accomplishments of the Waukegan Police Department. So, for the period of January 1 through July 13, the Waukegan Police Department confiscated 160 illegal firearms. That was either, firearms either possessed illegally or used illegally. 160 citywide, right? So, often, we talk about how the police aren't doing anything, we don't see the police, but I got to tell you, the, the officers are doing a fabulous job out there. I don't think they get credit for what they're doing. I would encourage you, if you're interested, talk to the chief or his designated, see if you can get a ride along. It's a learning experience, and, and it's really eye-opening. So, thanks to the team for what they're doing out on the streets, Chief. All right? That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I want to offer my condolences to all the Waukegan residents who have lost a loved one. I would also like to thank the YCC and Public Works. They helped out clean an alley. It's the one and only alley that we have in the Seventh Ward, over there close to the Timberlake Shopping Center, but they did a wonderful job. I've gotten a lot of really, really good feedback, so thank you for YCC, their volunteers, and our Public Works employees that are, they're just wonderful. Their customer service skills are great when it comes to dealing with our residents, so thank you for that. SCOOP, as everyone has mentioned, was great. Thank you to everyone who made it happen. Oh, well, please check on your neighbors. With the warmer weather coming, we, we need to do and be just a little bit more mindful and do some safety checks. And the last thing that I have is, as you're going home tonight, please watch your speed. That's one of the things that I ask everyone to do. It's some, speeding is something that we do unconsciously. So, sometimes it, we're just in, in too, too much of a rush to get to our destinations and don't give ourselves enough time, but that's all I had. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Alderman Moiseau, that concludes your Alderman's time.
All right, motion to adjourn by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Turner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.